All right, good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if we could all please rise. Councilmember Rob Donavich is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavich. Good evening, and welcome to the 1,890th regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting, which is scheduled to be held on Monday, February 24, 2020, at 7:00 PM in this auditorium. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Donavich?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
President McIntyre?
Here. Thank you very much. All members are present this evening. At this time, I would like to go to the council. If anyone has any personal announcements, tributes, or recognition that they would like to offer, Councilmember White, please.
I have a couple. First of all, I have the pleasure of announcing retire -- city and court retirees for the month of January 2020, and Catherine Rippey, a longtime employee of the court. She was the chief civil supervisor for 38 years, has decided to retire, so good luck to her. We wish her the best. I'd also like to remind everybody that February is American Heart Month. Heart disease is the leading cause of death among men and women, and the American Heart Association has a goal of reducing those deaths from cardiovascular disease and stroke by 20% in the upcoming year. And so what they're doing in -- to help spread knowledge about the problem is to talk about what they call Life Simple Seven. And there are basically seven factors that help everybody to avoid having cardiovascular disease. They are not smoking, physical activity, healthy diet and body weight, and controlling blood pressure, blood sugar, and cholesterol levels. I was fortunate to participate. Our fire department every so often gives a course in CPR for anybody that wants to take it, and things have changed since I initially learned CPR. So it was great to have an update and learn about what are the best methods for CPR in today's world, and to see some of their awesome equipment that they have to help revive people that are having cardiovascular issues. So it was very, very good, and I'm glad that the fire department offered that. And just to keep in mind that the symptoms of heart attacks are chest pain, shortness of breath, pain in the neck, shoulder, or upper back, abdominal discomfort, nausea or vomiting, unusual fatigue, pain in one or both arms, sweating, lightheaded or dizziness, and indigestion. So some of those you wouldn't think about as a sign of a heart attack, but they are. So call 911 immediately. We have great first responders in our community, and they're there to help you. So thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
It's -- Yes.
Other than the Heart Month, it's also Valentine's Day, and so make sure you remember those that you love. And our senior center always puts on fabulous parties for all our seniors, and I know that our president is always very instrumental in those as well, and many of us go over and give them candy. Even the diabetics, we give candy to. And it's a lot of fun. So anyways, I just want you to know Livonia's right on top of these things. And thank you, Madam President. I just had to remind people of that wonderful holiday coming.
Thank you. And the party, this year's party, is on the 13th, and I believe they may have sold out tickets, but I'm not 100% sure of that. So if anyone is listening or in the audience and is interested in attending, please call the senior center to see if there are still tickets available, and please order -- remember to order your Valentine flowers early.
Always, early.
Always. All right. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I'd like to go to presentation of the minutes. These are the minutes from the 1,889th regular meeting of the city council that was held on Monday, January 27, 2019.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
All right. Could we please take the -- would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. The minutes are approved. This time, it's my pleasure and privilege to introduce the department heads that are here with us every week, and then some who are here tonight in the audience. Beginning on my left, we have our city engineer, Mr. Todd Zalinsik; our economic development director and director of planning, Mr. Mark Taramina; our city legislative director, Ms. Judy Preby; on my right, our city clerk, Susan Nash; our city attorney, our lead city attorney, head city attorney, Mr. Paul Bernier. I see out in the audience, we have our city treasurer, Linda Scheel; I see we have our director of administrative services, David Varga. I see we have our parks and recreation director, Mr. Ted Davis; I see we have our mayor, Maureen Miller-Brosnan, walking in right now; I see Chief Hevner, our fire chief in the back. I can't see Chief, who's next to you?
Deputy Chief.
Hello, deputy chief. And I also see that we have members of several of our city commissions here this evening. So thank you very much, and appreciate all of you being here and the great work you do in support of our meetings. At this time, I would also like to announce that we have three public hearings forthcoming. The first is a public hearing that will be held on Wednesday, February 26, 2020, at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium of City Hall. This is to -- this is a public hearing on petition 2019-12-01-08 submitted by Gary Blum requesting to rezone the property located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between the I-275-96 Expressway and Hagerty Road, 390470 -- Seven Mile Road in the southwest quarter of Section 6 from M1 Light Manufacturing to OS Office Services. The second public hearing is -- will also be held on Wednesday, February 26, also at 7:00 PM in the auditorium here at City Hall, and this is a proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Dover Court Site condominiums located south of Ann Arbor Trail between Wayne Road and Norwich in the southwest quarter of Section 33. This hearing is to determine the necessity of this proposed special assessment project. The third public hearing will also take place on Wednesday, February 26, 2020, 7:00 PM here in the City Hall auditorium. This is also a proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Capri Court Site condominiums located on West Farmington Road, south of Eight Mile in the northeast quarter of Section 4. This is also to determine the necessity for the special assessment. I would also like to announce that we have new data this evening on items number 12 and on one of our X items, X2, and would also like to let everyone know that we do have X -- two X items at the end of the regular agenda. X items are items that are submitted to the council and requested to be put on the regular meeting agenda after the deadline has passed for the agenda -- for submission for items to the regular agenda. The council takes those up because they are matters that have extraordinary timing needs or extenuating circumstances, and we do those at the end after all of our other items. At this time, I would like to go to audience communication, and I know we have, I think, at least two people here this evening who are here to speak to us, and I -- other members of the -- other members of the public are also welcome to address the council on any item not on this evening's agenda.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the council, and the elected officials, department heads, and Madam Mayor that joined us. I just -- my name is Diane Webb. I'm your former Wayne County Commissioner, District Date, representing Redford Township, Dearborn Heights, in the southeast end of Livonia. And I'll be specific for the readers -- for the listeners at home. I, at one time, represented just a small section of Livonia from Joy Road to Five Mile, Inkster to Middlebelt. The remaining part of Livonia is in the 9th district, which is represented by Commissioner Terry Morecki. I'm here tonight to tell you that I have resigned my position, although most of you know personally, I wanted to let the folks at home know, to accept an appointment from Redford Township, one of my communities, to become their new superintendent. So I will be your leader to the left -- or to your east, and so if you -- if, you know, I still would love to do, you know, to work with you closely, because a lot of the things that we do are regional. So I wanted to tell you thank you so much, that it was a super honor to serve the people of Livonia with all of you, and to welcome the new ones. I still live here. I'm appointed, so I'm still a Livonia resident, and so I can still vote for all of you and support you all, and I'm here to help you any way I can, and I'd love to work with you, like I say, across the border, and in anything that I can do for you and for the city. But you do a fine job representing the city. I'm really excited about the new faces that you have, so I know they're going to do an excellent job working with the rest of you, and I just want to tell the people at home that supported me these last seven years that I've represented Livonia. I've been on the commission for 11, I've been in elected office for 15, but to thank them for the privilege of serving them, they've supported me strongly. I won the city of Livonia for the last three elections in a row, so huge thanks to them, and it's really been a privilege to serve. Thank you.
Madam President. Yes, Councilmember Toy?
I would like to commend you, former Commissioner Webb, for all your hard work for our city and all the other communities you served. You did all kinds of great projects, and your wealth of experience at the state level, I first met you when you represented AT&amp;T as a lobbyist, and you worked with me in my senate office and did a superior job, and I know the people of Redford are going to be well-served and well-represented by you. So much congratulations to you for that appointment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman. I appreciate that.
Yes, Councilmember Donavich?
Former Commissioner, now Superintendent, I just want to say congratulations. You were a breath of fresh air and helped me a lot throughout my campaign, and been a good friend and mentor to me. I'm looking forward to what you can do, and I know that you were pretty big in the senior leaf pickup. I'll help you out this year, since you'll be busy in Redford, I can help you there. So congratulations again, and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you all. And I just wanted to let you all know, and I wanted to coordinate this with them, but because of our schedules, we couldn't do that. According to the county commission charter, the sitting county commission that resigns a position prior to the end of their -- this is an election year, so I either had to make a decision to run for reelection at this point or take this appointment. When you don't run for reelection and you're just -- you have less than a year left of your term, we're allowed to appoint our successor. Our nomination has to be approved by the rest of the commission, but I did nominate former Senator David Kinesik to fulfill the rest of my term. Come this year, he will run, he'll file, I think he already has, to run for reelection. He's represented a portion of Livonia in the past. He's also represented both other communities. He does reign from Dearborn Heights, but he has represented both Dearborn Heights and Redford and Livonia in his senate district. So I know that he will do a fantastic job, and that I'm leaving you in excellent hands. He currently works for the Michigan Attorney General's Office, and he'll be resigning that position to take my position, but we just couldn't coordinate that handoff because we're both so busy right now. But he will be here in coming weeks to introduce himself to your public audience, for those that don't know him.
Thank you very --
Okay.
Thank you very much, former Commissioner Webb. Thank you for everything that you've done for our community. Congratulations on your new opportunity and appointment. We're very happy that we will have the opportunity to continue to work with you and collaborate with you and tap into all of your expertise and knowledge and love for this community, these communities. And former Senator Kinesik soon -- did you say he is -- his appointment has been voted on?
Yeah, they just voted him out. Actually, I resigned on Thursday.
That's what I thought.
He took effect on Friday.
Friday. And I appreciate it, because he did call me on Friday, and he expressed a desire to get here to council, to introduce himself as soon as possible. So best of luck, and we know you'll continue to be a visitor and a friend of all of ours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the community like to speak to the council on any item now on this evening's agenda? Good evening. Good.
Hi, my name's Katie Rogowitz. I am a Livonia resident and taxpayer. I just wanted a moment to speak to the council, as well as tens of thousands of constituents that you work for. I met with Police Chief Curtis Cade back in November in regards to one of his officers. He is aware of evidence that the officer used racial slurs, filed a false police report, and committed perjury. Lieutenant Lister was originally investigating the racial text messages, but he said that they could not be authenticated in the letter that he sent me in October. However, the phone download was on my phone. It was done by Michigan State Police by Wade Higginson, who actually works for Livonia PD. So they do have the evidence that proves that those racist text messages did originate from this police officer that works for Livonia. Why they're sitting on this evidence, I'm not really sure, but I do know that the officer is set to retire in two weeks. One of the biggest things that I thought was pretty disgusting was the fact that there is a code that police officers used to use in police reports to distinguish race in between suspects and defendants, and African-Americans were referred to as O4s. I'm not sure what the number is for white people, because I never heard Livonia police use it derogatorily towards white people, only Arabic people and African-American people by calling them O4s, O3 and a halfs, and they distinguish between gender by calling them a plug or a socket. Usually, it is led with an expletive, usually the F-word, when I would witness police officers both on and off duty using these racial epithets. One of the things I'd like to -- for the city to know is that this officer is set to retire in two weeks, is currently being investigated by Michigan State Police for perjury, filing a false police report, police misconduct, and criminal sexual conduct out of the Metro North Post of the Michigan State Police Department. I'm not really sure why Chief Cade hasn't acted on this. I have tried to reach out to people at the city. I haven't heard back. I just think that I speak for many taxpayers when I say that protecting a racist cop or a corrupt cop, police officers in general, is not something that I think this city needs to be associated with. I know that there's a past with the police department using racial codes for people. But when it comes to footing the bill for pensions and retiree benefits for police officers that are being protected till they can retire without incident, I find it pretty disgusting. I would hope that you guys would take it upon yourselves and your duty to look into this matter and see that the taxpayers are not being ripped off. Thank you for your time.
All right. Do we have anyone else that would like to communicate with the council this evening? All right, seeing none, I would like at this time to go to reports from our mayor and other city officials. I know that we have a communication from the Department of Finance dated January 20, 2020, regarding the quarterly investment report for the city of Livonia as of November 30, and that's just simply a receive and file. And I see our treasurer, Ms. Linda Scheel, would like to share a report and some information with us. Good evening, Treasurer Scheel.
Good evening, Madam President and council members. As the city treasurer, I just wanted to let all Livonia property owners know that the 2019 winter tax bills, which were issued on December 1st, are currently due to the Livonia Treasurer's Office and are now payable without interest through Monday, March 2nd. Both of the 2019 summer and winter real property tax bills are payable to the Livonia Treasurer's Office through Monday, March 2nd. Beginning Tuesday, March 3rd, any 2019 real property taxes still due can only be paid to the Wayne County Treasurer's Office, along with penalty and interest. If anybody has any further questions, or for further information, I encourage you to visit the Treasurer's Office at livoniatax.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Treasurer Scheel. Does council have any questions for the treasurer? All right. If we have no other reports from our city officials, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items 1 through 7 are listed on the consent agenda. They're voted on as one item. It does not mean that they are any less important than any other items on the agenda, but rather in our study meeting, they were determined to have not -- to not have been controversial in nature. Counsel, do I have direction?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Jolly?
I'll offer a proven motion for the consent agenda. Support.
Any comments by the council? Anyone in the audience like to comment on the -- any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, would the clerk please go ahead and take the vote on approval of the consent agenda?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. This time, we will move on to unfinished business, beginning with item number 8. This is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Chapter 88 of Title IX. This is the sale of tobacco products to persons under the age of 21 to bring it -- to bring our ordinance into alignment with the federal law and the expected amendment of Michigan's Youth Tobacco Act.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will offer first reading.
Right. Are there any comments? Any comments from the audience? All right. Councilmember White has offered first reading on that proposed change to the ordinances. Item 9 is also a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended. This comes to us from the -- also from the Department of Law to amend Title 16 of Title 12, Parks and Playgrounds, to add Washington Park and land adjacent to the Rudolph Kleiner Park to the roster of city parklands.
Madam President?
Yes.
Vice President Barr? Be happy to offer first reading on this.
Right. Any comments? Comments from the audience? Vice President Barr has offered first reading. Thank you. Item number 10 is also a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances, as amended. This comes to us also from the Department of Law to add Chapter 01, Open Meetings Act, compliance, and Title II, Administration and Personnel to Enable Members of the Public Body to Participate Well on Military Duty.
Madam President?
Yes, Council?
I'll offer a first reading in regards to this.
Thank you. Any comments? Comments from the audience? All right. Councilmember Jolly has offered a first reading. Item number 11 is a request for proclamation for the League of Women Voters. This came to us from Paula Bowman, the president of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. This was a request to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote, and the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters as a public service organization.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll give that proclamation support.
All right. Second, support from Councilmember Donavich, and would the clerk please go ahead and take the vote on item number 11?
Are we allowed to vote on this, Madam Chair? Just joking. Better go audience.
Oh, I get it. Women, yes, we are. Thank you for -- thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Toy. Took me a minute.
That's all right.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and I failed to go to the audience to see if there was any audience communication on this prior to the vote. All right, seeing none, we will just continue ahead. Thank you, and my apologies for not going to the audience. Item number 12 is a request to refer the subject matter of local government response to climate change issues to the administration of the city. This came to us from Councilmember Kathy White to investigate possible effects that the city of Livonia could undertake. And I would like to call our attention to new data that was received on Wednesday, January 29, and I would like this to request that we receive and place it on file, and this was -- this came to us from Dave Varga, the Director of Administrative Services.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a resolution referring the subject matter to the administration for further action.
Second.
Support from Councilmember Jolly. I'd like to comment?
I think I was pretty clear during the study, but a lot of communities are looking at local efforts that can be undertaken to try to address the issue of climate change, and I'm hoping that this subject will ultimately get referred to our Greenleaf Commission. I see our chair here in the audience, and I'm hoping that they will take a look and study the issue as part of the normal subject matters that they take a look at. Thank you.
I'd like to go to the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, now is an opportunity to do so. Good evening, Mr. Bearinghouse.
Good evening, President McIntyre, City Council. First of all, thank you, Councilmember White, for bringing the matter forward, and also for sharing the study that was conducted by the U.S. Conference of Mayors with the Greenleaf Commission. We're currently reviewing it. I'm starting to receive some feedback on that today, so we're very enthusiastic about it. I think the approach to take for it is, as you know, with climate change, generally falls into three large areas. Electrical energy, transportation, and buildings are the prime generators behind greenhouse gases and the effects on the environment. Looking at those categories, possibly others, like reducing -- increasing our recycling rates, looking for opportunities where we can reduce consumption in the city, thereby reducing greenhouse gases would be some opportunities for us, other types of management practices as well. So we look forward to working on this, and we look forward to bringing back some strategies where we can address this. I think the city has definitely demonstrated a history where we've done some very positive actions in terms of recycling. There's a lot of enthusiasm for that in the community. Areas where we made a lot of processes within City Hall paperless, both, I'm sure, council as well as a lot of commissions, use the SharePoint system, which allows us to move documents electronically, where in the past we had large paper files that were generated for each member. Areas like LED lighting for city street lamps, the city's been very aggressive in that area as well. So again, there's been some positive developments. We look forward to identifying more, and thank you for the conversation on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Bearinghouse.
I was just wondering, how much is this going to cost taxpayers?
If you could just -- if you could just state your name again?
Yes, Katie Rogowitz, for the record. How much is this going to cost taxpayers to do something like this?
This is if --
It's going to committee.
If I may, there's no concrete proposal on the table right now. It's to refer to the administration, which means we're asking the mayor and her department heads to come back with recommendations to the city council.
Okay. Is this something that would be another expenditure for the city in the future to constantly?
I just told you, Ms. Rogowitz, we -- there's --
It's Rogowitz.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rogowitz. There's no proposal on the table right now, so.
Are you guys aware? I mean, I know a lot of you are on Facebook. Did you see the feedback?
You addressed the chair.
Yes. Did you see the feedback? I know that you're -- I'm very well aware you're on Facebook, and I know there was a lot of feedback when people were posting about this last week, and none of it was very supportive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr?
I do have some comments on this. I certainly support data-supported efforts to increase our energy efficiency and minimize waste in the city. Mr. Bearinghouse referred to a number of worthy goals with that. I know our current administration remains committed to that. This council, as we have in the past, will continue to have opportunities to vote on these types of energy efficiency improvements. That being said, the stated purpose of this resolution is specifically to prepare a local response to climate change issues. That presumes two things. One, that the changing of the climate, something which has been a cyclical reality for the history of the world, is unique to our time. Two, that we have the power to reverse it. I reject both of these premises. Purpose matters. My observation is that initiatives in pursuit of real efficiency improvements, and those in the name of so-called climate change, tend to lead in two very different directions. And while I wholeheartedly embrace the former, I'm highly skeptical as to the value and to the intent of the latter. Therefore, while I certainly respect Councilwoman White and appreciate her intent with this, I will be voting no on this resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
So having a background in sustainability, green building, energy, I know we've got the Greenleaf Commission. I have a bandwidth with this, and I look at it from a I have a bandwidth with this, and I look at it from a standpoint that whatever we could do to lower our carbon footprint, but also where's the ROI? So LEDs, you know, we look at life cycle analysis and a lot of things that are out there now, especially solar panels, LED lighting, geothermal, those kind of it's those kind of technologies are getting cheaper and cheaper as it goes. And even solar panels have come down like sixty to seventy percent in the last ten years. So these are things that could save the city money in the long term, especially if we, you know, basically get our capital needs in line. I'd like to keep seeing our city go forward. I think the Greenleaf Commission's doing a great job. Anything we do now, even building and codes, has has an effect on our environment and basically our energy footprint. So I am totally for for sustainability in any ways we can save money while making our impact off of the the environment.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes, Councilmember Donavick?
To the chair. The Greenleaf Commission has done amazing work. They continue to embrace new ideas for our community, to continue to improve our sustainability, to improve our environment. I believe our administration passed, and this current administration has been very vocal about supporting the environment and taking steps and measures to continue to do that. So I don't necessarily think that we need to vote or do something different with climate change per se. So I will not be supporting this tonight, but I do support the efforts behind the Greenleaf Commission. As the chair spoke tonight, they've been taking on enormous amount of initiatives and been successful, and I already know that our administration has been vocal about doing things in the community as well, so.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't necessarily, I know for a fact that our administration does not need a prod to look into these things, but I think that it is the right gesture and the right direction to go as a city to show that we are thinking about these things and that we are mindful, and that includes the people up here on this council. So I will be voting in favor of this. And at the end of the day, you know, in my eye, looking skeptically at the situation with the climate and what's going on in the world, I mean, to me, I think I understand that what we do has an impact, and I'd like to lessen that impact. But even for those people who might think differently, I don't understand why we would not want to investigate, leaving less of a footprint, less of a mark in what we do in every circumstance. So like I said, I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? And I just want to make sure, Vice President Barr, that I understood, in no way are you suggesting that Livonia not continue on our very aggressive work on reducing carbon emissions on environmental footprint. You are simply questioning the validity of the premise of man-made caused climate change, but in no way arguing against the things we've done and really are aggressive and I think leading efforts. Is that correct?
Madam President?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, that is correct, and as I clearly stated, data-driven energy efficiency improvements and reducing waste, I'm all for, all for. I just think that once you offered the premise of the climate change for these types of things, it brings in a very different type of discussion, has very different goals in mind, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, we will move on to new business. This is item. Oh, I'm sorry.
Audience, audience.
I did.
Oh, did you?
I think I, Mr. Beringhaus came up and spoke.
Oh, that's right.
If anyone else from the audience would like to speak? Yeah, okay. Could we please go ahead and take the take the vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Sorry.
Councilmember Donavick?
No.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
No.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
No. But the the resolution passes, and this will be referred to the administration for its report and recommendation. Thank you. All right, now we will move on to item number thirteen. This is an acceptance of grant easement. This comes to us from the Department of Law. This was secured without monetary consideration from Randall Gasser, Executive Director, Woodhaven Retirement Community. For a twenty-foot wide public utility easement in connection with the water main constructed within the Woodhaven Retirement Community in the southeast quarter of Section fourteen, parcel ID number forty-six dash zero-five-six dash nine-nine dash zero-zero-two dash zero-zero-three.
Madam President?
Yes.
Offer support for this.
I'll second that, you're right. All day, I've been doing other things, other such things, but I support this. I second it.
Where's your robe?
Mr. Burnier? Do you have any?
No, it's an easement.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any extraordinary information to communicate with us.
No, it's an easement that we need.
And again.
It doesn't cost us any money.
Exactly, that's the those are the key words in in this item of new business. It was secured without monetary considerations, which means the city did not have to pay anything to secure this easement from Woodhaven. Good job, Mr. Burnier.
Nice job.
I wish I could take credit for it, but thank you.
Anyone else in council before we go to the audience? Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you would go ahead, please, and take the vote.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And it passes, so we've accepted the grant of easement. At this time, I would.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Thank you. Support?
Support.
Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. So we've now suspended the rules, and I explained at the beginning of the meeting what X items are. So at this time, we will go ahead and we will proceed to the first X item, which is X-one. This is an award of bid. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for the removal of failed pool liner and the installation of Marsite in the Jack E. Kirksey Recreation Center leisure pool from budgeted funds.
Support.
I'll second it.
Support.
What did you need? Okay.
All right, we now have the motions now on the floor and open for discussion. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council President McIntyre, and good evening, council. Let me start by telling you, you all look fantastic. I know you had your pictures taken before you came down this evening, so I'm sure you all look great. Thank you for putting the motion on the floor this evening. As I promised when we first met at the beginning of this calendar year, the only times you would see me was when we had bad news or exceptionally good news. This evening, unfortunately, we have some bad news relative to where things stand with the reopening of our pool. And while we have done an amazing job trying to bring a new innovative technology to our leisure pool, and I commend those of you who voted for this new technology back last year, we have unfortunately not been successful in finding a provider that's capable of a proper installation. So the pool is going to have to remain closed until we can put an alternative solution in place. As you may recall, back in July and August of last year, you had selected a contractor who was prepared to put in a rubber lining in our in our leisure pool. And this new innovative technology was a smart one. It was one that was a lot less expensive than Marsiting a pool. It was designed to last twice as long as Marsiting was by option, and it provided an additional level of comfort. I met with a Boy Scout troop last week that informed me that using Marsite, they were going to get pool toe once again. And that's what the kids call it, and it's those little blisters on the bottoms of their feet as they walk across the Marsite bottom. This new rubber lining would have eliminated that. Unfortunately, we have made three attempts now in working with the contractor to to put the liner in place and then to make adjustments to it that were supposed to be corrective actions. The installer has not been successful in providing a product that won't bubble up. As soon as we refill the pool and we turn on the jets, it operates efficiently and effectively for a short period of time, but then soon afterward, many of you have been there, you'll see where water begins to collect underneath the liner and the liner actually bubbles up. So this is not the way that things are supposed to function, and we have been in touch with the installer, and unfortunately, they have been not responsive. So we're now reached, we've now reached a point where we can no longer afford the time that it's taking to keep the pool closed down while we try to figure out whether or not the installer is going to be good on on the product that they've delivered. At this point, what they really need to do is bring a brand-new liner in place and install it, and they've been reluctant to do that. So we're now in a position where we are prepared to have the liner removed, to prepare to go in and Marsite the pool using a standard technology that's been used for umpteen years before. Our pools have always been finished in that fashion, and if you continue to authorize this action this evening, we're prepared to have somebody in on Tuesday in order to re-Marsite the pool. The objective in doing it that quickly is that we'll be able to get the pool up and running by the middle of March. Now, I know if I was sitting in your seat, and at one time I was sitting in your seat, one of my first questions to me would be, so what are we going to do about what we've lost? Because there's no doubt about it. We have lost time, we have lost money, our reputation is not what it used to be, even though we were trying to do something better for the community, it hasn't turned out that way. So we have gone to the bonding company. We have only paid ten thousand dollars toward the eighty-six thousand dollar product, and we're now in the process of trying to secure that ten thousand dollars and get that returned to us. And we are always also pursuing damages to make sure that the the company that installed the liner understands that this has come at a loss to our community. There's been money lost in not having swim lessons that we were able to conduct. People that have memberships haven't had the full benefit of their membership. So as soon as we're able to arrive at a date when we believe the pool is really going to be operational and up and running, and we're going to know that in a very, very short period of time, it'll be at that point that we'll be able to talk about what a restitution plan looks like, so that our members are made whole. It's very, very important to us as a community that we make sure that people not be inconvenienced any more than they already have been, and that they recognize, just as we recognize, that the ability to swim in the pool is part of their membership, it's something we want them to enjoy, so we're going to find a way to make things right for folks. So with that, I have Ted Davis here. He's going to be able to answer the tough questions, but I think between the two of us, we'll be able to address any concerns and questions you may have, and I do assume you'll have them.
Thank you. Vice President Barr?
First of all, Madam Mayor, I can tell you've been on this board because you answered almost every one of my questions. But I, one I wanted to confirm, you said timeline for completion, you're thinking maybe mid-March, is that what you said?
Mid-March, correct.
Okay, because I had a number of messages from members already today asking that, and I said, we're just talking about it tonight, I don't know yet. I also want to, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this question, but I want to say it publicly and give you the opportunity to say it. The contractor that was working on this, as I recall, was a reputable contractor who had experience in this area, correct? This is in a situation where we got somebody new and we're trying something totally out of the box.
That is absolutely correct, Councilman Barr, and actually, we went around the country asking people what their experience had been with this contractor, and all of the reports came back exceptional. There are a lot of operations that are using this liner very successfully. We're actually convinced that the product itself is probably not a bad product. Its installation was faulty, and unfortunately, the company that installed it is the one that had a great reputation, is not being responsive. They're just been very, very slow in arriving at the same conclusion that we arrived at early in the process, which was, there was no fix for this, a new liner was needed.
Have we considered at all looking at other contractors that can do this product?
And I'm going to let Mr. Davis address that, but this is, it's almost a sole source product. There aren't a lot of people out there that are doing this, and I think the other thing that that may go a long way to helping you to understand where we're at too, is that through the course of this, we've brought pool experts in to not only observe the installation, but to observe the three attempts at fixing the liner, and we have videotaped most of that, so that we've got a really solid case once we do eventually get to litigation, which we no doubt expect that we will be getting to.
Okay, one more question and then a quick comment. The last question is, in the materials that were provided to us, and ultimately what we're being asked to do here is to prove the the money to to move forward with this. The the company that's been recommended is this OP Aquatics. There was just one line in here, I wanted to make sure I understand what it says. It says, based on their knowledge of our pool and new water features, as they were awarded the bid for installation for this past summer. I assume you're talking about the installation of the water features, not of the liner, correct?
I'm pretty sure that is the answer.
That's correct.
I assumed, but I just wanted to make abundantly clear on that, that. And then, thank you for answering my questions, and thanks for your forthrightness and just being on top of this. The the one last comment, which I'm sure you're ten miles ahead of me on this, but when you're looking at recovering damages, I think it's also important to recognize that there's the potential because of this liner, that the Marsite installation's actually going to be more expensive than it otherwise would have, and I hope that's remembered when we go back to them for for damages. Like I said, I'm sure you're way ahead of me on that.
Councilman Barr, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. It is one of the items that's on our list of considerations, and through the course of this discussion this evening, or even through the course of your own deliberation in talking with residents, if you find that there are any items that you think we may have missed in our list of things we're going to have to be made whole on, please, by all means, give my office a call and let us know. And then the final point that I want to make is that following your vote this evening, we are prepared tomorrow to make sure that there's a public statement that goes out relative to when residents can expect the pool to be back up and running, and just to kind of fill everybody in again on where we are and how sorry we are that it's gotten to this point. Anything further?
Yes, Councilmember McCullough?
Probably better for Ted, this question is, it's more for the Marsite, so I'm looking at the bid, you know, results. And the biggest thing, the concern I have, and I'm not an expert in the pool business, but I think it would be, wouldn't it be better to remove all of the existing, you know, underlayment, the existing Marsite and get to a basically a clean slate?
I think that's a, that's a great question. Thank you for asking that. Ideally, our goal right now is to just try to remove the adhesive that put down the liner. We don't know where that's going to be. Also, it's, it is more time to remove all of the Marsite. So I think our contractor, OP Aquatics, if approved by council, where they're not going to know what they need to do until they get into it, really. We tend to think they're going to have to remove most of the Marsite right now, just because the product that was used to adhere the liner to the Marsite shell of the pool. So again, in a perfect world, yes, we probably would want to go all the way down to the gunite shell. For time's sake, we're probably going to want, we're going to want this job done as quick as possible.
Now, does that, if it's determined just to partially remove it, does that negate anything on a warranty?
No. A Marsite job, a typical lifespan of a Marsite job, and Diamond Bright, which you're asked to approve, is a brand of Marsite. It's five to seven years is a typical lifespan of it, and that's what we found it. You know, it just doesn't last that long, and it gets, and you can tell when it goes bad, because that's when every kid who runs in the pool has cuts on their feet.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Calling evidence.
And the Band-Aids are in Ted's office.
Band-Aids are. They're in other places as well, but I do have some.
Councilmember Jolly, did you?
Yeah, I'll just say quickly, you know, this is obviously an unfortunate set of circumstances. I don't think it's anybody's fault with the city.[1730.97] I don't think it's anybody's fault with the city. It would be wrong to not point out that this is so noticeable, because we don't normally have problems and issues like this. You know, this pool, you know, if you went back six months, you know, you would not necessarily right off, you know, first thing, recognize this heart, is the heart of the community in so many different ways. But I think all of us up here in council, and everybody in City Hall, and everybody in the rec center has heard about, you know, people missing water aquatics classes, obviously the swim lessons that were mentioned, but also just being able to take the kids up to the pool and let them get out some energy in the winter. So, I mean, I just want to commend the handling of this. I know that the Law Department, and you, and the mayor's office have been very involved in this, and it's not for a lack of trying that this has not been solved sooner. So, you know, I'll be supporting this tonight, and I appreciate everything that's gone into making this correct in the long run. Thank you.
Councilmember Donavich?
To the chair. Mr. Davis, Mrs. Mayor, I just want to commend both of you for the hard work. I was at the recreational center, I was working out, and I wanted to say hi to Mr. Davis, and he couldn't talk to me because he was so busy working on this, trying to get this figured out. So I know that you guys are working extremely hard on this, and I'm thankful, because I'm looking forward to going for a swim soon. So, thank you for your hard work, both of you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
If I may, to Mr. Davis, if I may, Mr. Davis, you know, we'd be stupid not to do this in plain English. So, all I want to know, though, is how long has this problem been going on over at that center? Because we've all had complaints on it, and I just wondered, timeline or timeframe, has it been a year? Has it been six months?
With regards to the liner you're talking about?
Yeah, and then when they fixed it prior to.
Well, the liner was initially installed, if we remember, we had a shutdown this summer for the pool, and it was the liner, we did new decking, we did baseboard molding in the facility, we painted, and we added new Aquatica features. So those were, that project was done in July and August.
Right.
We had a ribbon cutting, and I, you were there, Councilperson Toy?
I was there, yes, thank you.
As was some other people, as our mayor was there as well.
So were you.
So we, yes, I was there. Thank you. So we had that in September, and soon after opening, we realized there was, we thought there was at first air bubbles, which there, which it was, and then we kept getting additional bubbling underneath the membrane, and that was when we realized we had water leaking in underneath the liner. So really, almost from, almost from the very, very beginning, the liner was installed, we've been having problems. And we've gone back and forth with the contractor. Again, they repaired it once. We were closed for two weeks in October going into November, and we kind of limped along after that, quote-unquote, repair did not take. And then we have been closed since January 6th of this year.
Great.
So it's been ongoing since.
Well, it'd be great, we get those letters out to those residents, as the mayor suggested. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis.
Actually, I have one other question.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly?
And this is for the Law Department. In regards to all of the circumstances that have been brought up, missed lessons, missed usage, and all this, is the Law Department confident that we are able to seek consequential damages for these things, given the contract?
We also have a liquidated damage clause in the contract.
Okay.
So we feel good about our position. I don't really want to discuss what we're going to be doing, but we feel real confident in our position. There are a lot of damages in this, between just filling the pool four times, the lost revenue that we've had, the lack of goodwill. It's, we feel comfortable in our position.
Thank you, sir.
And as I indicated to everybody, we never promised the absolute results, but we promised our best results in this, our best efforts in it.
Good.
As a member of council, I think that was last year when we voted to approve this earlier in the year, it was clear, Mr. Davis, that you had done your due diligence, that, you know, the Law Department had done an excellent job on the contract. We didn't realize at the time how important that was going to be. You know, there was every reason to believe that this would work, all the protocols were followed. The mayor and I did have a good opportunity to talk about how, going forward, right, and again, this is not at all specific to this pool liner, right, or there were not mistakes made, right? We ended up with a bad vendor. But using this as kind of a root cause to talk about how in the future, other contracts, and not just with the, not just with the Recreation Department, but all of our departments, you know, are there lessons learned here that we can carry forward? And again, in no way does this reflect anything other than great work on the part of you, Mr. Davis, and your outstanding staff. And the other thing I wanted to thank you and the mayor for the leadership and communications on this issue. I think that perhaps last year, we didn't have a lot of, we didn't have a lot of clear communications, and I really appreciate the work that the mayor and you have done in addressing people's concerns. Because I think people are not happy that this has happened, but when you, when you hear information, when you get updates, when you know what the situation is, it does a lot to remove the frustration. I mean, it doesn't necessarily remove all the unhappiness, but it takes away, I think, a lot of the frustration. So thank you very much, both of you, for the leadership on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, council, for taking this item up tonight. I know this was an X item, and an additional effort on your part in order to speed this along. You've been right there with us through this entire process, so thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
And just one final comment. I explained at the beginning of the meeting, the reason we sometimes have X items are because there's an emergency issue that we were not able to receive in time to put on the agenda. This is an excellent illustration of something that needed to move along to the benefit, not just of the administration, but to everyone in the community and all the people who use our pool. So, thank you. All right, this time, I'd like to go to the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with us on this item, thank you for your patience. If you could please tell us who you are.
Hi, my name is Pam Schmaltz, and I live in Livonia, and I'm a rec center member. And I just want to, just basically ask that you would redo the pool, because I have been swimming since April of 2019, and I swim for health reasons. And like they were, it was stated, they said that the pool has not been working since September of 2019, and I have, I'm one person who have been swimming in the, in the lap pool to try and get the same exercise, but I'm not able to get the same kind of exercise without the vortex running. And as soon as they turn the vortex in the river on, which is a heavy current, the pool would bubble up, and not only have we not been able to exercise, we've not been able to fellowship with our friends that we normally swim with and talk to. Also, while swimming in the lap pool, the ladder has been broken for three weeks in January and February of this year, and it took them three weeks to fix the ladder in the five-foot end of the lap pool, and I was swimming with two ladies who had disabilities, and they couldn't get in and out with that broken. I also have been swimming in January and February of this year with, two or three other members are sharing the lane with you when you're trying to swim. So it's kind of like with all the programs I have going on with the 100 Days to Health, there's like nowhere for us to go. So I'm just asking that, that our, the members be compensated for the loss of not being able to swim, and that they will vote this in so that we can have our pool back. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking.
Thank you for your comments, and as you can see, both Mr. Davis and the mayor tonight heard your comments about the ladder. And just a question, follow-up, Mr. Davis, there is a lift, right, in both of our pools, both the leisure pool and the lap pool. So someone that was not able to get in and out due to a ladder malfunction or any other reason, right, there's always someone that can operate the lift. Is that correct? Okay.
There are functioning lifts in both pools, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Get the lady's name.
All right, would anyone else from the audience like to address council on this issue? Okay, seeing none, we can go ahead, please, Madam Clerk, and take the, take the vote on, on the resolution to proceed on the mar-sighting work. Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye, and the motion carries. So, and the work, and we will look forward to updates about the progress, yes, and to getting everybody back into the pool. Thank you very much. At this time, we will go ahead and proceed to item X2, and I would like to call everyone's attention to the fact that we have new data for this item that came to us. It was a letter submitted today from Universal Properties and Management Incorporated. Council, I'd just like to call your attention to that, and let the audience know. This is a site plan petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2019-01-08-01. It's submitted by Tom Kelly, Vice President of 18th Street Development LLC, and Connie O'Malley, the President of Outpatient Services, on behalf of Beaumont, to approve the, to approve a revised, a revised site plan that was previously approved by City Council on July 22nd, 2019, for construction of a professional medical office building located on the north side of Seven Mile Road, 39000 Seven Mile Road, in the southwest quarter of Section 6. And this was originally Council Resolution 262-19. Mr., well, we actually need a, we need a closing.
Madam President, I'll offer an approving resolution.
Second?
Support from Councilmember McCullough. Mr. Terramina, would you like to open?
Thank you. I will frame the issue here this evening, and then pass it on to the representatives from Beaumont to provide additional detail. Again, this is a request to revise the site plan that was approved by City Council back in July of last year. The approved plan, which is shown here on the overhead, involves the construction of a new four-story outpatient care center for Beaumont Health, replacing the existing office and industrial building, which will be demolished on this property. The proposed changes do not affect the design, the location, or the operations of the building. Instead, they affect how access is provided to the site. The approved site plan shows a new service road on the east side of the Beaumont property, connecting to Hagerty Road via Fox Drive on the north side, and then to Seven Mile at the south end via the signalized drive, which is located at the Pentagon Center Entertainment Campus. And this actually is an enlargement of that area where the driveway would connect to that Pentagon Drive and Seven Mile Road. So under the current plan, the existing un-signalized driveway at Seven Mile Road would be removed. The drive at Pentagon lines up with St. Joe's Parkway, which is on the south side of Seven Mile, and which is controlled by a traffic signal. Unfortunately, the petitioner and the Pentagon Association have not been able to reach an agreement, which is prompting the changes that are before you this evening. The current proposal eliminates the connection through the association property, and instead relies on the existing site driveway on Seven Mile Road. This plan shows the revised layout. This driveway is located approximately 250 feet east of the existing signalized intersection at St. Joe's Parkway. Prelimarily, Wayne County has agreed to the installation of a new traffic signal at this driveway, which would be synchronized with the other traffic signals along Seven Mile Road. Left turns into the site from Seven Mile would be prohibited. Additionally, controller upgrades and timing adjustments would be made to the other signals on Hagerty and Seven Mile Roads. Also, a new signal is being installed on Hagerty Road at the Hagerty Square Development just south of Costco, and this new signal, in conjunction with other improvements, which includes new wayfinding measures, are intended to have Fox Drive at Hagerty serve as a better means of ingress and egress to the Beaumont Outpatient Care Center. So again, what the request involved this evening, involves this evening is an adjustment to the site plan that was approved back in July, where the driveway would be shifted and coincide with the existing approach that is on Seven Mile Road in lieu of what was approved, and that was crossing over the Pentagon Association property and attaching to what is shown on this plan is Chippewa Street, which is also St. Joe's Parkway on Seven Mile, or on the Schoolcraft Road property, Schoolcraft College property. So with that, Madam President, I'll answer any questions you have, but I, the Beaumont representatives do have a separate presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terramina. Before I go to council questions to you, I neglected to mention, it's unusual to have an X item that comes from a third-party petitioner. The reason this was made an X item tonight, this was originally going to be item number 27 of 27 items on tonight's study meeting agenda. And because this is so complicated, and there are many stakeholders, there was a feeling that it would not really get its day in court, if you will, both for the petitioner, but also for the other stakeholders, had we kept it as item 27 of a 27 agenda item meeting tonight. So it was not, it was not in order to expedite things for the petitioner, but rather to ensure that all stakeholders had the opportunity to weigh in, and we could have a comprehensive review this evening. So thank you, Mr. Terramina, and my apologies, council, for the delay. Vice President Barr?
I have one question for Mr. Terramina, and then I'll have some more later for the petitioners, but when A123 Systems was there, this basically matches the drive that A123 had, right?
This is the driveway that was installed originally when the site contained the CBS Fox and Technicolor manufacturing facility, and later served as the main entrance from Seven Mile Road for A123. That is correct.
And I don't expect that we have exact numbers, but I suspect that the traffic from those uses was probably similar, if not even more, than what this would be? Or do you have a sense for that?
I don't have, I don't have a true sense of the traffic counts. We don't have that data from those previous uses. I think the patterns are a little bit different, and I'll let the traffic consultant speak more specifically to that.
There was one last thing on that I wanted to ask you. Give me five seconds. It's not coming to me. If I think of it later, I'll ask. Thanks.
You're too young to be listening. Does anyone else on council have any questions for Mr. Terramina before we go to the petitioner?
Madam President, if I may, just real quick, I, I don't necessarily have a direct question here, but if we do have the traffic consultant come up here, I'd like to understand the impact here of the potential adding of a second light at, or a new light at CBS Fox Drive, in regards to how that would function with Huron Drive. That seems like an extremely short distance to have two lights on Seven Mile, and anybody who drives up there goes without saying at this point that there are, at peak times, very difficult and very congested areas there. And I think that's, I don't so much have a problem with CBS Drive being the main point of access. I do seriously question the addition of a traffic light there, though. So if that can be addressed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Jolly, anyone else have any?
I remembered what I was going to ask, and it's kind of a softball question, but back, as I talked about what A123 and Technicolor and the previous people did, have we ever deemed that a problem with not having a signal there in the past? I should know, I live near there, but I wasn't driving in and out of there every day. Was that a known issue for the city, as far as you know?
Not that I'm aware of, Councilman Barr.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, if there are no other questions for Mr. Terramina, at this time, I'd like to ask the petitioner, petitioners, to come up if they would like to. Good evening, and if you could both please introduce yourself.
Sure. Tom Kelly, 18th Street Development, 1550 Market Street, Denver, Colorado. President McIntyre and council, appreciate the opportunity for being in front of you again, and Mr. Terramina for the background. I'd like to provide just a little bit of additional context. 18th Street Development is a subsidiary of Next Core Development. We develop healthcare facilities nationwide and are partnered with Beaumont Health on this project. Beaumont Health made the investment to purchase this land. They own it, they will continue to own it, and they can try, they control the overall direction of this development. So as such, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Wickersham, the Director of Ambulatory Expansion at Beaumont Health, who will be leading us through the majority of the presentation, and he will in turn ultimately introduce our traffic engineer to go through some of the details here, questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Good evening, council. Brian Wickersham, 26901 Beaumont Boulevard, Southfield, Michigan. So as Mark had mentioned, we prepared just a brief slide deck for you to help facilitate the conversation, and really put some context into why we're here today, bringing forth a third site plan for approval for our project. What you're seeing right now on the screen is the first two additions of our site plan. A little background context is, we were at Planning Commission all about a year ago this time, first coming forward just for rezoning of the property. And when we did that, we were met with some public comment that had some significant concerns around traffic. We heard those concerns, we wanted to address those concerns, and we figured that the best way to do so would be to tie into some signalized access points to create safety for the community and citizens traveling, not just to our site, but around it as well. So what we did to solve for that is, at the time, the historical home property adjacent to ours was up for sale. We had put it under contract in hopes that we could create a roadway that would travel on the rear of that property and connect to Chippewa there, to link up with the signalized access that exists. We did run into a few bumps in the road in terms of trying to reach alignment on the actual road itself traveling through that real estate, which is designated as historic, and it's something that I think we learned through the process, is it's not just the home that's historic there, but the, the real estate itself as well carries that designation. And it came with some complications. So between both Beaumont and the Historic Commission, we determined that it'd probably be a better route for all involved if we could avoid that property. We then were able to reach alignment with the Pentagon Association next door on a potential site plan that connected through the southern end of the Hyatt parking lot there and replaced some of their parking spaces throughout, so that they were still meeting city ordinance. While we had reached conceptual agreement on the site plan itself, unfortunately, we have not been able to reach terms on the actual easement agreement, which led us to then exhausting next iteration of this, which was done in partnership with Wayne County, is looking at a traffic signal at our existing entrance, which brings us to our newest site plan. And the one thing that I think is really important here is, anytime when folks think traffic signals, it's not always the best thing that comes to mind, especially in a corridor of Seven Mile and Hagerty, where we know that entire stretch of Hagerty from Seven Mile to Eight Mile is very tough from a traffic perspective. You know, the common fear that we've heard throughout this whole process is, we need to make sure Seven Mile does not become another Eight Mile. And we understand that. We really do respect that, and that's why we took a different approach to our traffic impact study. I think what's typical of many traffic impact studies is they look at their project, and they determine, how much traffic am I creating, and how do I mitigate this traffic? And that is industry standard for traffic impact studies. What we did, at the request of Wayne County to even entertain a conversation around a new traffic signal, was we gathered traffic signals of all of our neighboring developments as well. Ones that are there today, ones that are not there and coming in the future, including north of us, the new Chick-fil-A development, Hagerty Center Development, or more commonly referred to as Hagerty Square, being developed by AF Jonah, the Showstack Office Building, or the Cooper Standard Headquarters, which is just west of Hagerty Road on Seven Mile, as well as the new St. Joe's Medical Office Building, and St. Joe's Mercy Elite Sports Complex to the south of us. So taking a different approach here, we gathered those studies up, combined them with ours, and tried to take a very holistic approach at what's best for the community. How do we improve conditions so that we're not only mitigating our impact, but we're also improving the overall safety and traffic patterns of the area as a whole? So what our results were, in order to achieve this, was one, working through the signal timings along Seven Mile Road, and increasing those signal times from 80-second cycles to 100-second cycles. Ideally with the goal of, imagine somebody exiting off 275, traveling westbound on Seven Mile, where they can exit that off-ramp and get all the way through the series of lights there into Northville. We also are looking at improving two different traffic signals that exist today. First, the signal that's located in front of the Pentagon Complex at the AMC there, so that we can install new controllers so that it can properly time with the other signals up and down that intersection, as well as upgrading MDOT signal located I-7, I-275 and Seven Mile. So once again, that can be coordinated and timed up and down that entire stretch. The true new signal would be in front of our current site access, which we're referring to as South Site Drive today. And as mentioned by Mark, we know that our neighbors to the south do have a traffic signal there today. It is relatively close, and that's why we would prohibit left-hand turns. So cars traveling, cars traveling eastbound on Seven Mile would not be able to turn left into our facility. Frankly, the two left-hand turns, left heading into St. Joe's Parkway and left heading into our site would contradict and really become a hazard. So we would prohibit left-hand turns into our main entrance there, and guide them up to a secondary entrance located off Hagerty Drive at CBS Fox Road. On our next slide here is where I'm going to get to introduce you to our fantastic traffic consultant. Her name's Julie Kroll, and I'll let her provide her own introduction, but she's just going to talk through a little bit about what was done to really study this, to ensure that the impact that we were making and the recommendations that we're putting forward are successful.
Thanks, Brian. As you said, I'm Julie Kroll, I'm with Felice Van Den Brink, the traffic engineer on this project. So when we look at traffic analysis, we look at two different things. We use a software called Syncro and Sim Traffic. Syncro is the level of service analysis. That's where you see the level grades, A through F, as that evaluates the operations from the highway capacity manual methodology. The second part of it is the Sim Traffic, and that's what I want to talk about briefly just now. This is, takes the information that we put into our modeling software, and then shows it in a visual way so you can see vehicle queuing, and it looks at different driver behaviors, a bunch of different factors that go into it, so that we can look at not just the level of service, but also what is the projected operations. So, Mark, if you could show the first slide. If you click on it, it should go. There we go. So this is what you're looking at. This is without the traffic volumes generated by the proposed Beaumont site.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry for interrupting you. I really want to understand what you're saying. Have you provided this to us? Because this is kind of hard for us to see if we're trying to kind of take it in. Do we have like a copy of this, or can you forward this to us later on? Because I think we're kind of squinting to see what you're talking about here.
Okay. We'll make sure that we all get copies of the animated simulation. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
So what you're seeing here in this simulation is the traffic volumes operating without the Beaumont site. So this is without any other development, the Beaumont site, but all the other developments that Brian mentioned as background traffic. So this would, what the traffic would look like without our property going in, in the PM peak hour.
Can you go to the next one?
Okay. Okay. And then this is the one, when we add in the traffic signal that we're proposing with the site-generated traffic in addition to the background traffic. So this is with the-
Excuse me again. Let's crawl.
I'm sorry. I, you're trying to explain things to us. While we, I don't even know how to, I, this is hard to take in. Understand you're talking, and it's extremely valuable information. I don't know that any of us can adequately see what you're talking about here.
Sure.
All we see is a bunch of vaguely construed little dots, sort of, if you squint really hard.
Yep. Mark, you could advance to the next slide. So Councilman Jolly, what we were trying to show, there was something that Planning Commission specifically requested of us. When we were going through some of our results and recommendations, they found it tough to grasp, and what they asked for was the visual behind it, and we were really just trying to carry over our presentation from that to show here. I know I have sent Mark a copy of this. Absolutely, I hope that it gets distributed to everybody so that you can spend a little bit more time on a larger scale to be able to see that. But certainly appreciate the comments. I understand.
Madam President. Vice President Barr.
First of all, it can be difficult to see. I appreciate the efforts. I actually am impressed with the simulation and would like to understand it all the way through. But in light of some of the confusion here, the fact that we're being asked to vote on this tonight, there's an approving resolution on the table, I think from Mr. Jolly, Mr. McCullough, if I'm not mistaken. But I don't think, to me, this is complex enough that we need to be able to dig into this a little further. I'd like to offer a substitute resolution that we take this to committee of the whole.
Support.
And with, yeah, I have a number of questions, but if we're going to do that, I might as well hold it for that. I will just telegraph this. If this ultimately does go to committee of the whole, I'm going to want to hear as well from the owners of, I'm sorry, I don't know the actual company name, but of the Hyatt property, and understand exactly why what had been proposed didn't work. That's a big question in my mind right now, but I'll let this play out. If this is going to go into committee, I can hold it for that, so.
Madam President.
Madam President.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, if I may, to the petitioner. Sir, did you have a time constraint on this?
We do. We're actually about six months behind schedule right now. We've been, we put our original site plan forward last February with plans to break ground last September, and here we are today, still working towards our solutions. So that is ultimately the time constraint that we have behind it, is we made a commitment to the community, to Livonia and the surrounding communities, to bring healthcare, and unfortunately, we've been unable to do so so far, so.
I can appreciate that. So what kind of timeline would you need on this, sir?
Our request was to move it forward as quickly as possible. Our original plan was to be on the study session agenda this evening and come back forward to City Council, I believe on the 28th of this month. That is our hope.
Have you talked to any of your neighbors about this type of light, or the light with the traffic and things like that? And do you have any letters from them, or any evidence from them in that regard?
We certainly have, and I know I see some of them in the crowd today, because there certainly are concerns, and we're happy to address them. We could do that this evening. There's just a few more slides, or at the committee session, whatever the council prefers. But I know I see our neighbors at Schoolcraft are here. We spent a couple hours with them last week. Our neighbors to the north that was referenced in AF Jonah, I don't believe is here. I did not see Jeff Showstack here, but we've been in communication with both of them as well. And then, of course, Pentagon, we've been connecting with over the last year.
Sir, the reason I supported Councilman Barr's resolution to go to committee of the whole, because I think this is a very serious issue you bring forth to us, and while I empathize with the healthcare that you're trying to provide, which we thank you for, I'm also very concerned about that area. I travel that area practically every other day, and it's huge in volume of traffic. I don't care what time it is. And if you cared to, I would take your car over there and sit there and look at that traffic that's going through there. Perhaps you've already done that. So it behooves us to go to committee of the whole, in my opinion, and be fair to you, be fair to the neighbors, be fair to the area, be fair to the residents, the animals, whoever. But in all seriousness, we really, this is a very serious issue, and we appreciate you bringing it forward. But we also want to take the time to give you your time and others' time to look at this in depth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Vice President Barr.
I also want to point out that I actually think that if this goes through and goes to committee, I actually think this is the faster option for you than had it stayed in study tonight, because I think it's likely it would have gone to committee anyway. And the fact that we've done this, I actually think it's accelerated things for you, so I understand, and I'm sensitive to the timelines you're dealing with. I also just want to take this opportunity to just publicly state, and maybe this doesn't have much weight, because I'm not going to bring forth a resolution here, but we have the mayor in the audience, and just for the public, the whole topic of that Seven Mile and Hagerty area, Councilman Kritzman brought this up near the end of last year. I don't know if it's us, I don't know if it's the county, we can have some discussion offline about that maybe, but I think the whole overall look at traffic management of that area, and maybe some drastic changes, is probably in order. That's outside of this discussion, but I want to put that out there for the public. Thanks.
Anyone else from the council have questions to Mr. Wickersham, or comments? My suggestion would be perhaps that unless you have really high-level slides, that maybe we hold off, if they're similarly detailed until the committee meeting. But if there are any key points or big themes that you'd like to call out, Mr. Wickersham?
I think there's just maybe one or two more slides that I'd like to call out, just because I want the council to be thinking about this ahead of time, because I know at committee there will be questions, and I want to make sure that I'm putting the right framework in mind, and I'm sure others will evolve based on these comments. But the first one, Mark, if you could hit the previous slide for me. So the first point that I wanted to make, because we do understand the concerns in Seven Mile-
And you are aware that we can't, you know, that this is not, okay?
Then I will, then I will jump to my last one.
And again, the level of detail in here, which we want to see, it is inscrutable from where we're sitting right now.
Yeah. And what I can do, while Mark's flipping to the last slide, is just mention that what that was trying to state is, there's four different traffic lights in that area that we're impacting, and with the improvements that we're making, we're taking them right now from failing levels of service and improving them, in some cases, to Level D or Level C service. So without us coming in, they're failing, with some of the improvements that we're making, it certainly improves the current state. And then the last piece that I want to go over with you is, and I'm sorry, Mark, it's one slide prior to that, is just some of the comments that we've heard thus far through our petitioning, and wanted to really address them and put them in a frame of mind from our perspective. And some of them were indicative that neighboring developments were not included in our traffic study. We've certainly included more around us than perhaps any other development that's ever been put forth here. We were questioned whether the U of M Ambulatory Care Phase Two project was included. It's not included. It's not included because it's not a project today. University of Michigan has a consent judgment in Northville to do a Phase Two. We don't know if that takes place one year from now, 10 years from now, or never. So for that reason, it's conjecture and has not been included. We were asked about the Bloom property next door to us. We did include that in terms of our implicit increased growth rate that's factored into these traffic studies. We were asked about the current upgrade that was done at Chippewa Street regarding the protected right-hand turn overlap. We think that this is a very valid concern, and we're partnering with Schoolcraft's traffic consultant to really study that, and that's actually taking place this week, to determine if, how we would be able to mitigate that if the concern is realized. We were approached regarding the Seven Mile Crossing Entry Boulevard and the alignment with our site being offset. That is correct, they are offset, but they're actually offset in the proper way. The biggest concern when site drives are offset is so that folks on opposite ends can properly make left turns safely, and that is the case in this particular scenario. It was actually requested that we look at installing a boulevard at our entryway, but that would actually worsen the condition, not improve it. We were questioned in terms of the hours of operation that we looked at. We really did focus on AM and PM peak hours. And then I think that there's just an overall concern around traffic light signalization as a whole, and this is where I would reiterate, that Wayne County was insistent that we gather and bring forward a comprehensive study, because frankly, they don't have the necessary resources to be able to do that. And we pulled in the City of Livonia in those meetings as well, with Dave Lear and Mark Terramina, with Wayne County Commissioner Terry Marecki assisting to facilitate that, and really wanted to focus on, again, a comprehensive outlook that didn't just look at our site, but looked at the community as a whole. And then lastly, we were asked if we could re-approach Pentagon and determine if we were able to reach terms. We have a commitment to do that. I actually spoke to a member of the Pentagon Association today to discuss kind of where we're at and provide an update, and we committed to, again, meeting with him and trying to get through this, but not, it would not slow us down where we were at with this process, because we've, again, been trying to reach an agreement with them for about a year now and been unsuccessful.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Yes. Councilmember White.
In thinking about this prior to the committee of the whole meeting, can you tell me what your peak hours are?
Yeah, our peak, so peak hours are going to be, AM peak is seven, seven to nine, and PM peak is four to six. Our traffic is a little bit different than what A-123 has there today, or previously had there when they were there, because A-123 is essentially showing up in the morning for work and all leaving at the end of the day. While we do have that traffic, and that's a good amount of it, we also have some fluid traffic through the daytime hours as well, because of course, patients that will be back and forth through the campus.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Wickersham? All right, then, if not, we'll-
One, please, one final comment. I do appreciate the opportunity to go to committee. I agree with you that this is a very sensitive topic. We've heard that much from every step along the way that we've gone here. We will be proactive in also inviting the neighbors to make sure that they're aware of when that takes place, because we do want to be good neighbors, we want to be good participants here. We know we're the new group coming to town, and we certainly want to build on those relationships, not damage them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wickersham. At this time, I'd like to go to the audience for audience communication. If there are people here this evening that would like to speak to council on this issue, I would invite them to come to the podium, please.
Hello, council, and thank you, everyone who's here and took the time out today. So my name is Daniel Cook. I happen to be a Livonia resident, but today I'm here at the request of Schoolcraft College. I work for WSP. I work for WSP. We, we're an engineering consultant. We did the traffic impact study for the medical center that's currently being constructed on the Schoolcraft campus. We also did the design work related that came out of that at the St. Joe's Parkway Drive that was just done recently relating to right turns and left turns. So, the thing I wanted to bring up at the request of Schoolcraft for us to be here and give just our opinion on this was that the signal being proposed is very close to the other signal that was just modified with the intent of sort of moving that northbound right turn traffic out a little bit quicker, dealing with some issues related to the left turns. And just generally speaking, putting traffic signals very close together can cause problems, sometimes problems that you don't anticipate. And every traffic impact study, while they can be very good at giving you an idea about how things might work and whether a traffic signal might make sense there, they're always, include some level of assumption and necessarily imperfect. And so, we just, WSP's opinion is that the council, the county, and all involved should just tread carefully in this as you consider this and consider all possible alternatives and whether there's something else that conceivably be done related to the site plan or otherwise. We will work, we've communicated with Fleisen, Vandenberg that we would like to go out and take some short counts and understand some of their assumptions and see if their modeling could possibly be improved a little bit more to give more confidence. We don't have, we have not invested the time that their consultant has at this point to say that it's, could it work? But simply, it will absolutely, or any signal you add on, add a driveway in a main street necessarily delays the main street in order to give time to the side street. And whether or not that's acceptable here is, you know, for other people.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. And I think you see, the reason, the logic for referring it to committee is for that very reason. So, you know, this can be looked at comprehensively and with all stakeholders having an opportunity to participate in the discussion and discussion of alternatives. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question of Todd, Mr. Zilinski? Ultimately, whether or not a light is put in at that CBS Fox Drive, is that a decision of Wayne County?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, we're just, and this goes to Mark, we would just be deciding whether or not to let them forego the proposed driveway to Huron Drive, correct?
To St. Joe's Parkway, correct, yes. So, the issue before the council is to amend the site plan to show the driveway to Seven Mile, the existing outlet, as opposed to the original approved site plan, which shows it going to, as you indicated, Huron Drive or St. Joe's Parkway.
Okay, so a lot of this, a lot of the concern here, though, ultimately, that we're expressing, will be decided by Wayne County as to whether or not they put in additional light.
That is correct. A good example...
So, that kind of, understanding that, though, kind of simplifies what we're kind of discussing here today. So, we could be concerned about this traffic light when ultimately it's not our decision to make. The site plan is, correct, but the traffic light itself is up to Wayne County. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Terramina, a question, or maybe it goes to the petitioner. Has, have we gotten indication from Wayne County as to their view on this traffic light?
As I indicated in my opening comments, preliminarily, they have approved this signal. I don't know where that review stands currently.
Okay.
Maybe the petitioner can update us if there's been additional communication with Wayne County regarding this.
Okay. I thought you'd said that. I just wanted to clarify that there is preliminary approval. Councilmember Toy.
Not to belabor this, but Madam President, perhaps when we have a committee of the whole, if it is voted on the substitute, or you withdrew yours, right, with the motion, then perhaps we could get letters from Wayne County? Because if I heard correctly, the petitioner said they didn't have, I don't know if it's the manpower, people power, or whatever it is to come out and explore this, perhaps. So, maybe we can get a letter from Wayne County. And I know Ex-Commissioner Webb is still here. Thank you, Commissioner. And I think you chaired traffic, didn't you, down there or something?
I did chair the committee of public services for four years, yeah. And Ronnie...
Could we call up Commissioner Webb or Ex-Commissioner Webb for a minute? Since she's here.
We could. I would just, you know, and I'm happy to have her come up. What the petitioner said was Wayne County does not have the resources to conduct its own traffic simulation flows, but they do have the personnel to understand the traffic simulation flows.
Okay.
Would you still like to...
Yeah, if she can give us some inputs, and she's going to be leaving us.
Thank you. I can tell you that at one time Wayne County had about 65 engineers and they have about five now. They contract everything out. So, while they don't have the resources themselves to conduct the traffic studies, they do have the expertise, and Ronnie Agazinski's been with us about 30, 35 years, he's one of the best, you know, to interpret the studies and make a decision. There's still a whole lot of other things outside of just the traffic light. So, Councilman Jolly's last comment about what's within your wheelhouse and what is outside of your jurisdiction is spot on. You still have to take into consideration, even if Wayne County grants the light there, all the other factors that are going to affect neighboring businesses, residents, commuters, et cetera. So, it's good that you're taking a closer look at it. And to be honest with you, I don't know if that study's, looks like it may have already been conducted, if it's already been interpreted by Wayne County or not. But, you know, they move slow enough to give you the time probably to do what you need to do on your end and get it back up here, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
Through the chair, this question's for Mr. Terramina.
I'm trying, we're looking for our communication from Wayne County. I believe it is in your packet.
Does the county, you said that the county ultimately makes a decision on this light. Does the county take into consideration our input on this or how we feel about this light?
I think they will, yes. I think a decision made by council would influence way heavily on their final decision.
All right. Would any...
Do you want to call the question?
Well, I was going to ask if anyone else from the audience wanted to communicate with council. Okay, if you have something to communicate on this, please come to the podium.
Patrick Shrock with the Pentagon Center. And I just came here to observe, didn't know much about it. I didn't know that the light was going to be put in until about a few weeks ago. So, just came to this meeting. Don't understand a lot of this stuff either, to be honest with you, so. But I think we're close to settling on this. I think we can come to terms with getting this negotiated, so.
Yes, Mr. Barr, Vice President Barr.
If I understand you correctly and you're saying you're willing to discuss this, this could be a lot easier committee meeting. But I'll just remind that the proposal on the floor is to go to committee. And while I don't want to squelch discussion, if somebody has questions, that's fine. I don't think we need to have the committee meeting here.
Right.
Agreed. Agreed. Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
Sir, if at all possible, I implore you to figure this out before we have the committee meeting because that makes this exponentially simpler because we've already approved that plan. Please, I mean, you're going to be neighbors one way or another. I implore you and I ask you very kindly to figure this out. When you say terms, I don't know if that's code for money or what else has to go into it, but please, we are asking you to figure this out because it's not just better for you in this circumstance, it's better for everybody. Thank you.
Understood.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shrock. Anyone else from the audience wish to comment on this item?
Glenn Cerny, 1806 Hunter Hagerty, Schoolcraft College, VP CFO. I want to just compliment Beaumont on Brian, Julie, and Amanda that we met with last week for a couple hours pretty extensively. We, at Schoolcraft College, we welcome Beaumont and our area because that's going to cause our students to have more experiential learning opportunities. It's fantastic and it's a great evidence of growth here in the city of Livonia. Our biggest issue going forward is that the light that we just put in about a year and a half, two years ago is exceptionally the best solution for all involved. In fact, the site plan approval that you guys approved back in June had that where Beaumont would go in off of our light turnover. And at that time, there was no changes suggested for any traffic flow. We actually implemented the change for the right turn going out and the left turn coming in, and that was at our expense. And we put that in within the last couple of weeks and the traffic is actually flowing very well right now. So, we really appreciate Patrick being here today to support that and we think that's the best solution. And I also will echo David Fishman and Universal Properties as well because they're going to get severely impacted by a light going in at their intersection, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cerny, and thank you for your engagement in the process. All right, anyone else from the audience? Mr. Wickersham, did you have, and I just ask you to please keep it very brief.
30 seconds, yeah. The only thing that I would add is if it is going, if Pentagon Association is to come to the committee and the group wants to understand details, I'd like to make everybody aware that we are under a non-disclosure agreement with them, so we can't willingly share details. We will be happy to waive that ahead of time if they would like to get into the details. But without their cooperation there, we cannot get into the details of that agreement.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, last call for anyone in the audience to communicate with council this agenda item. And the motion on the floor is now to refer this to committee of the whole. All right, seeing none, would the clerk please go ahead and take the vote on referring this to committee of the whole? Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye. So, we will work with the council office and the petitioner to schedule a committee meeting as soon as possible. So, Mr. Wickersham and all the other parties, we will be talking with our legislative director tomorrow and Mr. Terramina to figure out how soonly we can get that, how soon we can get that scheduled. All right, at this time, we go back to the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with the council on any item that was not on this evening's agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to bring up something about urban environment and put that over to the Public Safety, Health, and Environment Committee to take a look at some of our environmental concerns. And that's what I would like to make the motion on. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have support?
Support. I have a question.
Vice President Barr.
Just to help clarify for the public, I think what you're specifically talking about is some of the urban forestry, the, correct? I want to give you an opportunity to clarify what you mean, Councilmember Toy.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Barr, if I may answer, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Also, as you know, we just did the clothing at the curbside. As we look at the recycling programs that are going on, we were fortunate to negotiate a long contract on that. But with the questionability on some of that, I think it behooves us to take a look at things like plastic and glass and the increasing of some of the kinds of environmental waste that we do do and perhaps do do, and also some guidelines as it reflects it as well. Thank you very much.
All right. We have a motion, we have support. Would anyone else like to comment on this? Then we could go ahead. Madam Clerk?
To send a committee, correct?
Yes.
The Strategic Planning Committee.
Strategic Planning, correct?
No, Public Safety, Health, and the Environment Committee.
Your committee.
I'm sorry.
Public Health, Public Health, Safety, and the Environment Committee. Thank you. Go ahead, please, and take the vote. Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye. So, the motion carries, so this will be referred to committee. And that's, you're the chair, so we'll go ahead and get a committee meeting scheduled. This time, would anyone else from the audience like to address the council on any item not in season's agenda? If you would, I'd ask you to please come to the podium promptly.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All right, and if there are no objections, I believe we can safely show seven on that. We are adjourned. And I apologize for doing this. We usually have a 10-minute break before meetings.